Next speaker, please.
Yeah, Jim Stucker, I'm a taxpayer. Okay, I have a little couple of things to say. Why does Mr. Murphy trying to stop me not to talk like the other ones do? We don't, I don't, I know why. It's a lot of things going on around the city. I mean, Nailock Park should be fixed up again. Don't worry about Western Field Park, we should be Nailock Park, we should be getting back in shape like it should be. You know, we got a new mayor, he should do something, that new mayor, Dougherty should do something for the Nailock Park. We should get our animals back there. Mr. Reet, Brian Reet knows that. There's no reason why we can't get that park back in shape. Western Fields, we're not worrying about that park, we're worrying about Nailock Park. And why do we, everybody in Scranton gotta pay taxes. Everybody in Scranton pay taxes, I'd like to know why, and I do. And up at Tripp Park, they got, we have to pay taxes and they don't, it's not right. Is there a reason for that, Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, that's a state program.
We need a, we need some more, up on Parrot Avenue, there's a big hole in the road, my buddy Pat told me about it. And I made a tishin, you remember you were here when I got the tishin wrote up for lights up there on Parrot, all the way down them houses. What happened? We never, I never seen the lights up. We, I never seen them up, the ones up by the house, by the ball field got lights up, yes. We didn't get the lights by the ball, down by the houses, like, like he was saying.
Mr. Stucker, just as a point of information for you, once we receive a complaint such as that, we send it down to our engineering department, and they look at it, and they make a determination based on their knowledge and expertise as to whether or not it's appropriate to put lights in that particular area, or signage in a particular area. It's not a question of council making that determination, it's a qualified professional making the call.
And, we gotta stop, we need a light over there bad on Music Street, real, real bad, somebody gonna get killed. And you always hear last Monday about it, and I know Jimmy was, he seen about getting to sign, get a paper to sign downstairs. I ain't hear anything about it yet.
What block is that, Mr. Stucker?
Right there by the Chinese, by the Chinese food there on Music, by the gas station. We need a light there, real bad, somebody gonna get killed there yet. One of the kids, there little kids running around back and forth that street. Little parents ain't with the kids.
We could have that looked there.
The kids ain't, the parents ain't watching the kids. We just had a fire on, we had a fire down there like two weeks ago, a month ago, well, actually a week. We had a fire down there, one of my buddy's houses caught in fire.
Do you have anything else, Mr. Stucker?
No, can you see about getting that, them light holes fixed up on Parrot for us?
Yeah, we'll have, we'll have somebody, somebody go over there and check out Parrot Avenue, make sure the...
Means I don't live there.
A lot of holes, one of the problems is right now...
I don't live over there, so, means there's a guy named Pat.
Well, one of the problems that we have in January is you can't really be patching holes during the winter.
Yeah.
And as soon as the weather breaks, the, this city's gonna, they'll be out trying to, actually probably, probably be a pothole hotline, call up, let us know where the problems are, we'll forward them down to the DPW, and hopefully the, they'll do the best job they can.
Okay, right up at Morgan, right up at Kaiser Avenue, Pat's mother lives over there, and there's no lights where Games Diner used to be. All the way around the corner, oh, there's no lights on that street at all, on both sides.
There's a, there's a multimillion dollar state project going on there right now.
Uh huh.
And I'm sure those lighting issues will be addressed as the, as the project progresses. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Joe.
I'm Dave Tannahill, and I haven't been here for six months. Had a problem with the house in Green Ridge that I bought and tried to save, and was taken down by the city. But my main complaint here is that I would like to talk to the law department. I see they're kinda busy right now, but we'll talk to them later. My point here is, the fact is, oh, twenty-one thousand dollar lien. Now, any of you gentlemen sitting up there today, probably all own homes, or, or whatever. When you get something like this that is not even versed, not even brought in, not even, how would you say it, without getting upset, not even told about. I tried to save this home in Green Ridge, and all I did was get blown up for it. All right, my point is, I'd like to ask the law department a couple of questions.
That's not possible at this time. If you wanna, if you wanna get legal counsel, and you'd like to ask them questions, and have them submit something to them, I'm sure they could develop some type of correspondence, but...
Yeah.
Gene, Gene Hickey is not legal counsel for, for everybody.
Well, I had legal counsel, Greg O'Connell, indeed as much as he could for me, and he couldn't do anymore.
Maybe we can refer it down to the new general counsel for the city. What is your question in particular?
Okay.
We'll help you out.
I don't believe why I should get letters like this by harassment, because really, the city hired NCC credit, and they have a new owner now. And if they collected six million dollars of money that couldn't be collected, then really, why do we have tax collectors?
Were you given a hearing on this issue with, with our former director, Mary Alice Burke? Wasn't she involved with, with your particular situation, and you were given a hearing, and there was a problem as to whether you showed up, or? Could you clarify that for me?
Yes. We had a hearing with Mary Alice Burke over a year ago, and at that particular time, they made a statement and a decision while I was out of the room. Can you clarify that?
Yeah, from what I understand, and I discussed this with Mary Alice Burke on several different occasions, you were invited to a hearing, you left the hearing, and got lost for a while, and came back after the determination had already been made.
She was the one that asked for a break, when I came back from the break, they said the decision is made, that they're gonna take down your house after I made the improvements on it.
Mr. Tannahill, I, I don't wanna argue with you about your own individual circumstance here, but if you do have a question, you'd like us to refer it to the law department, just state what your question is, and we'd be happy to forward it down to them, provide you an answer.
Oh, very simple.
And we'll CC you on the...
Very simple.
Okay.
NCC is hired by the city, city council approved it.
That's correct.
Now, if, if they collected six million dollars, that means that NCC collected a million dollars. Obviously...
Roughly.
Pardon?
Roughly, if you're using rough figures, then that's acceptable, yeah.
Where I'm at is, this lien has burdened my daughter, Colleen. All right, she left the room. This, this, this particular lien has burdened me because it ruined my credit after a hard working man of forty years, and, and all the other things that go with it. I don't have to get into a thing about my reputation. Now, if you're gonna blow me off, like, I feel that you're not giving me a fair chance.
Well, I think at the hearing, you were given a fair chance, and you didn't represent yourself, and a determination was made, not based on what I feel was the right thing to do, but based on what the people at the hearing, and the arbitrator thought was the right thing to do.
I disagree.
Okay.
I'll tell you why.
But I'm not, I'm not, I don't wanna debate the issue with you, I know you have a problem.
We're not debating the issue, I'm telling you why I disagree.
But, but what is your question, that you'd like me to refer it to the law department, so I can help you, if this is best I can?
I despaired the law department simply because I wanted to ask them exactly what is the six million dollars, what percentage did NCC get?
Okay, we could provide, we could provide that for you.
If they're, if they're gonna charge me, or try to charge me twenty-one thousand dollars, and they've already put a credit lien against me...
You have one minute left.
Then, if I'm gonna stay in the city of Scranton, really, why should I pay any other taxes, and why should anybody else that has a lien with NCC?
You have one minute left, sir. Could, could you make sure that you leave your address, you don't have to say it over the microphone, but leave your address with Ms. Kittles, and we'll provide the response from our law department as to your question.
I'd like to refer to one thing. My file has been in the law department for a year and a half, and it has never been reviewed. Now, I don't take these things, I'm sorry.
Yeah, please, please try to contain yourself.
I don't take these things lightly when they, when they come into my family. This prevented me from doing something for my daughter. Now, all you men must have children, or you mu, you must have family, or you wouldn't be sitting up there, you wouldn't have been elected.
You turn this up. I'm sympathetic to your situation, but, but, but on the same token, the city incurred an expense to raise your home. And a, and a hearing was given, and the legal course of action was taken, and although I'm sympathetic to your, the lien that's against your house, and the, and the financial hardship it's caused you, there's really nothing I can do to help you out.
No, wait, you got it backwards. I never lived in the house. I took the house after the city had it for six years. And I bought it, and I fixed it up, and after I fixed it up, the city tore it down. Now...
Well, thank you for your comments, and we will provide that answer for you.
Am I dismissed?
I believe so.
Well, that's too bad.
Next speaker, please.
Raymond Lyman, citizen.
What is your name, sir?
Raymond Lyman, citizen.
Okay.
I have, I have a problem in Pine Brook. I have a sewer drainage ditch that, that's cracked by the sewer line, that's, it's cracked like this by the manhole, and I'm afraid that little children will fall through it.
Where is that, Raymond?
The 300th block of Phelps Street on Lord's Court.
300th block of Phelps on North Court?
Yeah, you know where Capous Avenue is?
Yes.
And you know where Wyoming Avenue is, where the old Waffle Shop diner is?
Yes.
You go down that way, and Lord's Court is here, and, and Drainage is here. And it's, it's, it's cracked in half like this, and I'm afraid that little kids...
Okay.
I told Jimmy Connors, I told the, you know, Rocky, what's his name?
That really doesn't matter at this point, but we wanna try to help you out.
I told Dougherty today, he was at the association meeting today up at John Adams', and he told me to come down here to tell you.
Okay.
And he said that you will do something about it.
Yeah. Mr. Wintermeyer, please forward Ray's comments down to...
I got a question to ask you.
Our city engineer. Okay, one moment, please. I don't wanna lose my train of thought.
Okay.
If you could send his comments down to our city engineer, and have him review the situation, and at least put an emphasis, an emphasis on that letter, that we put up some type of a safety precaution around that area, to make sure that no one is injured. Continue, please.
Yeah, 'cause, and I have a question to ask you. Now, I was thinking a way you guys can make money for the city. Here's an idea for you guys to make money. You know that, that conference center and hotel you're building? Why don't you put a little casino in there?
The state hasn't, the state has to pass laws pertaining to gambling.
Well, I mean, you could put slot machines in there, that's legal in the state of Pennsylvania.
No, no, it's not.
Or bingo. Bingo is loud.
Okay.
If you ever see on the reservations, they make a lot of money on bingo. I seen it. I went to bingo, I went in Connecticut, and I seen those big bingo places, they make lots of money, and you guys can make a lot of money off that.
Thank you very much, sir, appreciate your input.
And then, you know what, there's another question. You know the hospitals? You can make a lot of money off, I should say, you can make a lot of money off that if you put parking meters all over around the hospitals, and charge them. And that's the end, and that's the end of them taking free spaces for the people who live there. Because I see people who can't get there. Because I have an aunt who lives up there, and she have to park some like six or eight blocks away, just, and she's about seventy-some years old. You know what I mean, Chris? Seventy-some years old. And she have to walk about six or seven blocks to, to walk to her house. And I think that'll be a better idea, especially around the Mercy, the CMC, and that'd be the end of it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. City Council, Article Five, if you would be, so kinda look that up. Any person or persons who wishes to address council may do so on the period set aside or citizens' participations. Any person addressing city council shall be limited to five minutes of comments unless extended by the council president. Doesn't say that we have to address our questions directly to you. As you stated a couple of weeks ago, I asked a lot of questions here, and you didn't give me the right answers. And I don't like to sit down, I happen to be a professional, okay? And when I ask a question, I like an answer, I don't wanna wait two weeks to try and get it. As you stated, people, in the majority, elected you people to council, and we applaud those people for electing you. On the same token, you became servants of the people. And in doing so, you're here to answer the questions of the people. People come here every night, or every Monday night, which incidentally, in your state in meetings, under rules of council, says state meetings of council shall be held on Monday of each week at seven o'clock. You canceled one a couple of weeks ago for a holiday, there's nothing in here that says it's a holiday, you elected to do that. We need to move Scranton forward. Well, you may think it's a professional way not to answer questions, or answer at your discretion emotions, and allow anyone to respond until two weeks later. I don't like living in the past, I like to move forward. When I ask you a question, I like an answer, at the five minutes I'm allowed to do so. I think everybody's entitled to that. If you can't answer the question, then allow the appropriate councilman that's sitting here to do that. I ask questions about finance, I ask questions about who's in charge watchdog of the city. In your rules of council, and you should familiarize yourself with them, it will tell you what each department is. I asked on finance. And rules relating to that, all subjects relating to revenue for the support of the city government, relating to claims against the city, relating to taxation, the city treasurer's accounts, the exonerations to finance and budgetary transfer shall be referred to committee on finance. That means we should have answers. When I asked you about cell phones, I didn't get an answer on it, I'd like to know why you're entitled to a cellphone, a taxpayer is exempt. Could I have that answer?
I, I believe I entertained that question two weeks ago, and I'm not going to do so again at this time.
You didn't answer my question, Mr. Murphy, you said it was a good deal. I wanna know why you're entitled to a cellphone, none of the other councilmen are.
I, I believe you just didn't like the response that I had.
It wasn't the response I asked for, Mr. Murphy, it was the response you gave, and you're...
Mr. Bolus, Mr. Murphy, don't slam your hammer tonight. Mr. Bolus, you're out of order.
No, Mr. Murphy, I didn't come here to be hard to matter.
Mr. Bolus, you're out of order.
Mr. Murphy, then...
Let me speak, when you ask me a question, and I'm not gonna argue with you, because we're not, we're not gonna behave that way.
Then, please...
And I don't wanna have to ask you to step down.
Mr. Murphy, that's your choice, if you so to do so.
You're out of order, if I have to ask you to be quiet again...
Mr. Murphy, don't, please, don't sit there tonight, and tell me to be quiet.
Mr. Bolus, you're out of order, please step down.
No, I'm not, Mr. Murphy, I want an answer to my question, and if you wanna remove us here, and you think you're gonna sit at this council...
Thank you very much.
And dictate, no, don't thank me, if you're gonna dictate the people here, every day, I'll be with you in a second. Mr. Murphy, this question is not answered...
Officer, please remove Mr. Bolus from the podium.
There'll be other answers, Mr. Murphy, and remember, I'll be with you in a second.
Mr., you're not being acknowledged right now by this council.
The problem is, you haven't answered the question.
He does not acknowledge you, Mr. Bolus, at this time. Officer, remove him immediately.
Mr. Murphy, you have to earn it, and you better earn that question.
Thank you very much, officer.
No, thank you, Mr. Murphy, and I'll be back, and I'll expect my answers.
Next speaker, please. From the meeting.
Excuse me, where's this at?
You're removed from this meeting, please have him removed, sir.
Excuse me, under the rules of council, Mr. Murphy, it's ninety-nine.
Next speaker, please.
No, okay.
Officer.
Raymond Lyman.
What's your last name, Raymond?
Raymond Lyman. I, I wanna talk about what happened last week, and how I, I didn't like the way, the way the council did to Bob Bolus, I thought it was trocesis. I mean, you had students from the high school, and you had students from the college, and I thought that was disgusting, show, show students like that, politicians, do stuff like that in front of, to do stuff like that, that made me sick. I mean, you were supposed to, to be respected in office by elected officials, by the people, for the people, not to think that you're dictators. I mean, sixty years ago, we got rid of Hitler, but yet, you think that you could boss a man like Bob Bolus 'cause he asked you a question? I mean, he asked you a question, you should've answered that question, not sit there and be quiet. I mean, I'm not, I'm not insulting you, Chris, you know what I mean? I'm just giving my opinion. I mean, we elected you, I mean, you're not a king, and you gotta remember that, 'cause the election is coming up, and we could vote you out. And I also got a problem in Pine Brook. We got a light that's by Philbin's Garage on New Street and Lord's Court. You know, one of those main lights?
Okay, yes.
That's burned out.
Okay.
I was just told about that.
We'll, we'll make sure we get a note out to...
That, that, I just found out about that today. But I still think that was rot, because a lot of those students, and then friends, friends of mine who go to the university said that was rot, and I thought that wasn't right. I mean, you're politicians, and you shouldn't do stuff like that. Because, you know, I look at, you look at a politician, you look at great men like Kennedy. And people like Kennedy would never do something like that, insult someone like that. You're supposed to respect a person, and you're supposed to honor a person. That's what I was taught, and I was taught with the Bible. And then, that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, sir.
Brilliant.
Good evening, ladies, good evening, gentlemen, good evening, girls and boys, and viewers. There's several things I would like to bring up, my name is Tim Redfield, I live at sixteen forty North Main Avenue in North Scranton, by the high school that was taken over by Goodwill. There's nothing been done with the Good, that building since Goodwill taken over for the last several months. I've lived in Scranton for over six years, I've taken two years up in Scott Summit. Can we try and get this project forward, as you gentlemen and ladies put it, to some stand to keep stopping going? And number two, the expressway up from Scranton going up towards the eighty-one on exit, the old exit fifty-seven, it's a total garbage disaster, do you have personnel that can come around and pick up the trash up that strip, please?
Tim, I believe that's the state that handles that stretch of road, but we can get a letter out to Chuck, probably Chuck Mate with the state, or we can get in touch with the local district manager. We'll do that for you.
Okay, thank you. And when will, Main Avenue, I don't know if that's the city road, sixteen hundred block Main Avenue getting repaved, and also the, the crossings, the white lines that get marked crossings, where the high school used to be, because there is a bus stop on both sides of the street, and people do not stop at the corner either. And last but not least, at Mulberry Street and Wyoming Avenue is a bus stop that goes for, that's under called buses in Scranton, PA, down by the high school. It says called buses, right before the bus stop, there is a meter, for some reason. I have to go up to CMC Hospital every day on my lunch hour, to visit a relative, and a very good friend as well. I have two people up there. I cannot get up to the bus stop, because there's two rows of cars going, facing the bus stop, going towards Wyoming Avenue from Linden Street. And this happens to be at, right before school is dismissed, doesn't Scranton school buses come up to the school, their school and pick up these kids? Or we have... Or is there gonna be a problem, excuse me, is there gonna be a problem with the buses going up there, trying to get over, because I get in the middle of the street with a bunch of the passengers of the called buses, that we are good supporters with, to get on a bus, to get in the middle of the street, to go up either High Works, or going up to other locations, please? I mean, it's very dangerous. I mean, if there, it says called bus stop, there should not be a meter there, on two side meters. If you can have one meter, fine, just have the one before the called bus stop, not the one, and then you got the other, a double niche one. It is dangerous, if you look at it, because you got senior citizens going up towards, which is a Peter's Beer bus, it goes up to CMC, you got Chestnut, Chestnut Ash, and Jessup. It's gonna be dangerous, and I don't wanna see anybody get hurt, especially if you got kids that trying to get off the bus, or getting on the bus, which at two thirty, or two fifteen, it can be wild, because I heard we also did excellent job this year on the parade, I thought that must've did some business in Scranton as well. The other thing, last but not least, I would like to have answers for these also, and I know you got about forty-five seconds, sir, is having SNS Amusements Carnival come up here and do a, like a fundraising for the city of Scranton, because I know you're in a predicament with money and financial wise. And after dismissal here, I can give the young lady the phone number for SNS Amusements, because they can use it up at the Green Ridge Plaza, which is not used much, and Mr. Swack, the owner, could have all of his rights there.
You have one minute left, sir.
All right, I was close. I was close, but that's what I was trying to point out, you could pull in so much money with SNS Amusements with this fundraiser, sir, and I'm sorry about that, Mr. over in the corner. And is there anything else? That's the only ones I have to bring up, but I would like to see, like the cars out of that zone area where it says called buses, and just have one meter and not two.
What block is that, Tim?
It's right where Bishop Pohanna is.
Bishop Pohanna?
Up on Mulberry, over by the convenience store, sir.
Okay. Maybe get a, get a letter out to Colts, and see if they could address that, look into it for us. Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Tim.
You're welcome, and thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, and have a great night.
Thanks, Tim. Thank you.
Please state your name for the record.
And I'm here to, to talk about the, the history of Scranton. And did you know that Scranton was originally called Razorville and Slocom's Hollow? And that we're, that are, that it's, it's a hundred and sixty-two years old this year? And I was thinking that we should have like a party for the city? You remember last week, Kevin, you told me to tell you guys about it?
Yeah, I thought it would, I thought it was a good idea. I, I had realized that Scranton was once known as Slocom Hollow.
Yeah, but I also discovered here in the book, there's like, like, Deep Hollow in seventeen eighty-eight by Philip Abbot, Unionville in seventeen ninety-four by the Slocom's, and Slocom Hollow in eighteen sixteen was honored by the Slocom's. And then it was the Iron Works was honored by the iron furnaces of eighteen forties. Then Harrisonville was named after eighteen forty-one by William Harrison, who was the president, who was a, he was a candidate who later became president. And in eighteen fifty, it was named Scranton, and in eighteen fifty-one, it was then named Scranton. And then it was incorporated in eighteen sixty-six. But it was founded in eighteen forty. And I was thinking that you should have some kind of party for, for it, you know what I mean? Like you, you know, you and the mayor, like some kind of, have like a little parade or something, like you have for Saint Patrick's Day, and you have for the Easter parade, you know, like for the Christmas parade, you should have something for Scranton.
We'll have to direct that down to the mayor.
Yeah, I mean, that, I mean, this is history.
I appreciate your, your research.
This is history. I mean, Wooksbury, I heard that they're having a party, because I saw it on, I saw it on forty-four.
I think what might be a good idea, every year we have the music festival at Nailock, and it's, it's been ongoing now for the past decade at least.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, but, the music fair.
I think we should celebrate this as well.
But that's, that's nothing compared to, like, teaching these kids what history is.
No, no, to, to possibly incorporate your ideas into that would be a good idea.
Like, having a party, you know, like, like, you remember when Jimmy Connors had that week with the bands, and they had the rides?
Yeah, that's what I was referring to, that's what I was referring to at Na'og.
Yeah, 'cause they sit in here, Na'og, they, originally Na'og was called the Sternberg Line, they, they had like Gettysburg was named from John Getty who bought the land. I mean, some of this stuff, you know, we, we don't know, like, no one knew about this, because it's all long forgotten. Capousin Avenue was named after an Indian chief. Did you know that?
I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, Capousin Avenue was named after, uh, a, a Capousin Indian chief.
Ray, it's, it-
I mean, that's something interesting.
Ray, it may, uh, be possible that Channel 61 would have an interest in putting on some kind of history program.
That would be something great for American, I mean, we studied American history, I mean, I, I was looking at, they won't let me take the reference books out.
Oh.
But I got like this one, uh, but I was reading some of the interesting historical-
I think it's nice that you took the time out to research, uh, the history of our city.
Especially the history of this city. I mean, you know, like, they sit here, I just wanna tell you, I just wanna say just the, just one more thing here. Wait a minute, I just wanna say, in 1840, there were only 500 houses when this city was founded. 500 houses. In 1866, when this city was incorporated, 30,000 houses were built. In 1910, 130,000 houses were here. That's a lot of people that lived here.
Certainly is.
I mean, that is, that is history.
You have one minute left, sir.
I mean, that is a lot, you know what I mean? And I was thinking we might-
Excuse me, sir.
I think he's gotta go, Kevin, I think he's-
Pardon me, Ray, you, you still have your, your time, don't worry about that outburst. If there's another outburst like that, sir, you'll have to be asked to be removed.
You know, I was, I was thinking, you know, we get like a plaque, you know, a plaque with the original names of Razor, you know, Razorville and Slocom Hollow, and put it at Na'og, and remember it.